Testing, testing, one, two. Testing, testing. Andrew, do you want to test your microphone?
Hey, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, March 11th, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. We would like to start off with a call to order, please.
Commissioner Neal?
Here.
Commissioner Christensen?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Marlowe? Commissioner Roden? Chairperson Kovarubius?
Here.
Record will reflect that Marlowe and Roden are absent. They both did tell us that they were unable to attend tonight.
Can we do the pledge of allegiance, please? Staff introductions, please.
Marcy Renoso and Ashley Peterson, Administrative Assistance.
Warren Fraice, Community Development Director.
Darcy Delgado, Associate Planner.
Okay. Are there any general public comments regarding matters not on the agenda? The office? No? Marcy, any callers?
No, we just wanted to also show we have Andrew from Legal Team online as well.
Got it. Thank you. Are there any agenda items proposed to be tabled or rescheduled?
There are none.
Thank you. Then let's go into the public hearings portion of this. Do we have a staff report on item number one, the Dow Time Extension, P22-0069, TX25-01 for PD2209?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here to present the time extension request for Dow Winery at 5175 Airport Road. So the project site is located 5175 Airport Road in the Business Park General Plan designation and Industrial Plan Development Overlay zoning designation, and the Zone 5 Airport designation. And here you can see in a more recent aerial update, the existing Stravinsky Building that was constructed prior to approval of the initial entitlement. Here's a look at the parcel map showing the flagship lot, as well as that first parcel that now contains the Stravinsky Building. So this request is for a time extension to a development plan for approximately 157 wine production facility with interior uses, including barrel storage, bottling, packaging area, and warehouse. Some background, Plan Development 2209 was approved by City Council on February 21st, 2023 via Resolution 23016. The entitlement was set to expire February 21st, 2025, and the applicant, Dow Vineyards LLC, requested a two-year time extension for PD2209 due to this change of ownership. And with the approval of the proposed time extension, PD2209 will then expire February 21st, 2027. So, as required, the four findings have been made. There have been no other changes requested, along with this time extension for the scope of work, as well as no changes to the general plan, and the entitlement was reviewed with our updated zoning code, and it still aligns with all required findings. And the applicant did provide a request stating that the extension was required due to that change of ownership. And this request is exempt from CEQA. There was an initial study and a mitigated negative declaration. That was adopted in Resolution 23014. There have been no substantial changes to the project or to the surroundings or environment. Therefore, no subsequent MND or EIR is required, and all the conditions adopted within the MND and the MMRP shall remain in effect. So the options for the Planning Commission tonight are to approve draft resolution, PC25XX, approving the request for a two-year time extension for Plan Development 2209, to grant the time extension for a shorter period of time, or to amend, modify, or reject the noted options. And staff recommends to approve draft resolution, PC22XX, approving the request for a two-year time extension to Plan Development 2209. And here's just a final slide showing that site plan, as well as the aerial of the current property site.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, let's see if there's first any questions from any Commissioners. Start looking to my right. I'm not seeing any. Commissioner Christensen?
Just for clarification, Piper, is this their first request for an extension?
This is their first request for an extension.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Commissioner Connolly?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think I saw a picture earlier. This picture doesn't show it. Is there access, like a flag access, or access from a road off to the side? I was just curious about access to this parcel.
Yes, so there is a flag portion of the lot, here to the parcel map, to, I believe that's true south, and that's where they would be getting their access. In reviewing it, it does appear to already be paved, prepared to maintain access.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Seeing no more questions from the Commissioners, I'd like to open it up to the public. Any public comment? Marcy, any callers?
No, no callers.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public part of this, bring it back to the Commissions. I'll entertain either a motion or another question. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer a motion?
Yes, sir.
That Planning Commission recommend the approval of draft resolution 25 dash, number to be inserted, for the granting of a two-year time extension for Plan Development, PP2209.
We got a first by Commissioner Kogler and a second by Commissioner Christensen. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kogler?
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Neal?
Aye.
Commissioner Connolly?
Aye.
Chairperson Kovarubius?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Going on to our second item of the public hearings, we have...
Chairperson Kovarubius?
Yes, sir.
Our company has provided a cost opinion on this project in the past, so we'll need to step away.
Okay. Warren, that still leaves us with a quorum?
Yes, you still have four. You're good. It will note in the record that Commissioner Neal has left the room.
Got it. Okay. The second item is the refile of entitlements for Marriott Fairfield Inn and Suites, P16-0005, TX24-13. I'll take the staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. So, as you heard, this is what we've colloquially referred to as a refile. It is a reapproval. So Marriott Fairfield Inn and Suites is a project that was previously approved, and they have technically run out of all their time extensions. They've exhausted as many as they can ask, and so this reapproval process is before you tonight. This project has active building permits, but that has not vested the entitlement, so that is why it's here tonight. So this is the Marriott Fairfield Inn and Suites. Let's see if I can advance the screen. Okay, so here we are at with the location map. So this is on the east side of the city at Union Road near Barney Schwartz Park. So the general plan designation here is commercial service, which is supportive of hotels. The zoning designation is C3PD. The PD is just the Plan Development Overlay. Hotels are also compatible in that zone. So it's in Airport Designation, Zone 4, which really just has a table that limits, you know, the people per acre, but otherwise hotels are allowed in that zone, as long as they're not exceeding the people per acre. So, as I said, this project was previously approved and received, you know, it had an active entitlement, and over the years, you know, they've been working on their building permit, and they have had to ask for time extensions. So in terms of the project itself, it still complies with all of the, you know, general plan, zoning, airport criteria, as it was previously analyzed, because nothing is proposed to change with the project tonight. All right, so here's just a, you know, a project request for everyone to see on the screen. So this is a 119-room Marriott Fairfield Inn and Suites. So the original project entitlements are Development Plan Amendment 15005 and Conditional Use Permit 15020. You can see on the screen that there's a rendering of the hotel, superimposed, looking, oh gosh, what would that be? Southwest from Union? All right, so I'm going to explain the site plan a little bit for you. Previously, when the project was originally approved back in 2016, it was going to be a Marriott Extended Stay Residence Inn. Thank you, Warren. And so they, in 2017, they made a modification to the plan, so to change it to a Fairfield Inn. So they have a different, you know, smaller footprint. It's not, the Residence Inn is an Extended Stay. Fairfield is not an Extended Stay model. So what you see with that yellow outline and that green outline was the previous footprint of that older, the original version. So in 2017, the Planning Commission approved a modification. Substantially, the architecture was the same, but it kind of restarted the timeline, I would say, for the project. So what you'll see when we talk about the time extensions and the original approval, it really dates back to the 2017 amendment that the Planning Commission approved. So here's that perspective view of the Fairfield Inn and Suites. So I was looking at old staff reports, and the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that they described it as a contemporary Mediterranean architecture. Planning Commission had approved this version, and then it's actually since been to DRC for substantial compliance. Again, we have building permits actively in review. So at some point, DRC did take a look at the architecture as they've been working on their building permit, but this is what Planning Commission previously saw back in 2017, for the most part. All right, so here's really all the background information. I will try and go through this quickly. So as you can see, the entitlements were originally approved by City Council in May of 2016. So that was the Marriott Residence Inn. And then January of 2017, that's when the Planning Commission approved the modification, and that's when the site plan and the hotel elevations changed to accommodate the brand for the Fairfield Inn and Suites. And then since then, they actually did request a total of six years of time extensions as they were working on, you know, their building permit. So building permit was submitted in 2017. That's actually the very last bullet point. The project has a building permit, which was first submitted in 2017, and just for the Planning Commission's timeline, the last round of corrections were issued to the architect in July of last year. We're aware that they are committed to finishing this project. There have been some changes with the hotel brands, their franchise interior standards. They've assured us that it's not going to change anything with the architecture, anything on the exterior. So, but that has been the reason why they have not been able to, you know, get the building permit issued at this point, is they're just, you know, working on some changes. Because the project had been approved for the total of eight years, which would include the original two years of, for the entitlement, plus the six years of extensions, we have a section in our zoning code that dictates that the application be treated as a new application. So that's why we're calling it, you know, reapproval of the entitlements today. As I mentioned previously, the DRC has seen this fairly recently, in the last couple of years. So the original, you'll see the original Fairfield on the left, which was approved back in 2017, and then with the different iterations over the last, you know, with the brand franchise. And it's not uncommon with building permits that, you know, windows have to move because of hotel, sorry, because of elevator shafts and whatnot. But what you see on the right is what the DRC approved back on November of 2022. And again, the applicant has said that they're not making any changes to the project. With those interior standards that are needing to change because of Marriott's branding, it will not affect the exterior. Generally, you can see some changes in the porticoche, very minor. There was one other thing that, oh, it looks like the balconies may have changed. I know this is not super blown up for you, but it looks like the balconies that are on that east-facing back tower on the left, on the left side of the building, look like they've slightly changed. But again, DRC has already approved that version and found it substantially compliant with the original approved Planning Commission rendering. All right, so this project has a mitigated negative declaration that was approved by City Council. This reapproval, this new application that you're hearing tonight, is consistent with that original mitigated negative declaration. Since there have been no substantial changes to the project, the staff feels that the project will not result in any new significant environmental effects or substantially increase the severity of previously identified significant effects. There's also no new information that would allow for a subsequent MND that staff feels that there's no subsequent environmental review that's necessary. So we'll continue to rely that the existing mitigated negative declaration is still in effect. So with this reapproval, a few new conditions needed to be added. Staff was made aware that some future changes to the Union Road alignment may happen, and it could be not in our lifetime. It could be, it could be, there's a few different iterations. And so what I listed here is coming from the resolution that's in your agenda packet. So the first condition is really just saying that the original council resolution approving the project with those conditions of approval, that those are still in effect since the Planning Commission resolution didn't actually have any conditions of approval. It was just changing the exhibits for the architecture from the, you know, the Residence Inn to the Fairfield Inn. So those two resolutions are still in effect, except were amended by this resolution, this draft resolution, 25XX. And so number two really then dives into what those new conditions are that are being added to this project. So A, B, and C are new conditions. A is a result of, in the event that, with Union Road realignment, just kind of depending on what, again, this could not be in our lifetime, it could be in the future, but that they have to incorporate post-construction best management practices for onsite, impervious additions to retain their stormwater onsite. And then there were a couple of conditions that, again, if, for the benefit of the city, these are standard conditions that we decided would be more beneficial for the project. So B and C have been added. So B says prior to issuance of the building permit, that the applicant shall submit a composite utility plan, signed and approved by a representative of each public utility. The applicant's representative has reviewed this, and they're agreeable to it. This is a standard condition that we usually check the box on certain projects. For whatever reason, back in 2017, it wasn't checked. And so engineering had determined that it would be a good time to just throw it in, and I don't, I'm pretty sure, we have Dante here to answer questions with regard to engineering, but I'm pretty sure that it's really a fallback for the benefit of the city. It might not actually have to, maybe it's number C. The applicant may not have to do much in order to meet these standards. So C is prior to issuance of the building permit, that the landscape and irrigation plans for the public right-of-way shall be incorporated into the improvement plans and shall require approval by the Streets Division Supervisor and the Community Development Department. I might let Dante explain that a little bit better than I can, but again, the applicant has reviewed these and is agreeable. All right, so with the, here are the options available to the Planning Commission tonight. So option one would be to approve the refile of the expired project entitlements by adopting the draft resolution, which would grant reapproval of the project. Option two would be to approve the project with modifications by amending or adopting the draft resolution. Of course, you could refer this back to the DRC or staff for additional analysis, or deny the project by adopting findings of denial. As I said, they have an active building permit. We're anticipating them to finish, you know, finish what they started. And if you have any questions or want more clarification from Dante, I'm going to throw him out there. On those newly added conditions, staff's available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that, Darcy. All right, let's bring it back to the Commission, see if there's any questions to start with. Anybody on my right? Commissioner Kogler?
Mr. Chair, more of a comment maybe than a question, just a curiosity. On page 19, the applicant in a letter submitted say their commitment to complete project is strong. They have demonstrated with the ongoing construction progress of our Residence Inn by Marriott Hotel Project on Wilmer Street. And one project in a place where I don't even know where that is, is not a real strong conviction that something's going to happen in the next eight years. Just out of curiosity, I Googled it, and I only came up with Wilmer Street in Catawba, North Carolina. Is this even in California? Do we know?
I'm sorry, did it catch the preface to the question?
They reference one project as demonstration of being able to make progress, as they're making progress currently, and they said the project on Wilmer Street, period. Do we know where that is?
Yes, that is the one that you see as you're heading on South Line towards the Target Shopping Center, the one that's been, you know, it's still, it's still being worked on.
It is indeed. Okay, I didn't know that was Wilmer Street. It didn't show up on my search. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you for that. Any questions? Commissioner Christensen?
Thank you. Just a couple of follow-up questions. In regards to the time extension, if we, if this is approved, they'll have additional time for extensions every two years, is that correct?
Yes, so this is being treated as a new application. So if the Planning Commission approves it tonight, it does start a new cycle, so that in theory, they could, after two years, request another, you know, up to six years of time extensions.
Okay, I just want to get that clarification on the record. I appreciate that. I think that, my annotations here. So on the site here, I know discussion was in the notes from staff that they would have to put a detention basin onsite now as part of new criteria. Do they already know where they would put that? Has that been something that's been established as part of the site plans, and would that affect anything environmentally onsite? I could see that that would be a question.
So I might have either, or the applicant's representative, Rob Miller, for engineering, to answer that question on where they would, you know, put the other onsite stormwater. We did discuss this. Overall, it's not a substantial change, so there's still, you know, when this was analyzed under the lens of CEQA, the stormwater was evaluated and how they would retain it. It's not a significant enough change to put it from one location to another, because it's still being managed onsite by the applicant in some way, whether it be a basin or a chamber. So it's not enough to substantially change the environmental review.
Okay. And then another question to that, has there been, I'm sure staff has assessed this, but maybe we can put it out there on the record, because it's a question of mine. Has there been any major traffic or circulation changes since 2017 that might affect, that this project might affect in a fashion that we should be concerned about?
So, you know, we, a lot of these hotel projects and these larger projects, when we've done the traffic analysis, they all really point to the same criteria of improvements at Airport Road and future overpasses and whatnot, a realignment. So there wouldn't be anything to reanalyze. Those would all still be in effect, all the same, you know, we're still pointing to the same mitigation. And so this project would not change, you know, nothing's changing with it. So it's not going to point to a different mitigation criteria.
Maybe the fact that there's less rooms might help?
Less, I'm sorry?
There's less rooms onsite? That's a smaller footprint?
Oh, as opposed to when it was originally approved? Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So that was a benefit when it was originally approved by council. You're correct. The, I mean, it was still 119 rooms back then, but it is a smaller footprint, so maybe, you know,
Okay.
less people would be staying in each room.
Okay, thank you for that. And in regards to the, I'm sorry, go ahead. Dante, if you wanted to say something?
I was just going to say something quick. The original conditions of approval have a no left out of Union onto Highway 46 is one of the mitigation measures. So we read through the traffic study, or sorry, traffic conditions and felt that they still apply. We don't see no changes.
Great, thank you for that. And what about, while I've got you, Dante? The access where the road change might occur towards the back of the property? Is that part of circulation? Is that part of circulation planned still?
Yeah, correct. So in conjunction with the over crossing that we have planned for Union Road, the Union Road realignment. So the applicant has, you know, offered to dedicate that right-of-way to us, and we don't see any changes with the alignment. And we've been working with Caltrans on how the plans are going to route.
Great, okay. And then maybe this is another question for staff, or maybe the applicant when they want to respond. I too had some concerns. I saw that the building permit was pulled in 2017. Was that the correct date? It wasn't a typo, right? So then it's been getting extended until now. So one of my concerns, and maybe the applicant might want to address that, is the timing and the timeframe to build out in that regard. Other than that, I don't have any more questions at this time.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Connolly?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, similar to Commissioner Christensen, my question was about the realignment of Union Road, if that's still in the works, and if it's still, this footprint would fit that future realignment? Correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So we don't see any change with the alignment that's proposed. We've been coordinating closely with the applicant and their engineering team to make sure that we are in the right place, so.
And then my next set of questions involve the CEQA document, the mitigated negative deck. And I note that that was approved in 2016. There's been refiles. We have extensions, and there's a new, this is being treated as a new application. The hotel has changed to a smaller footprint, but I don't know if there's been any changes to the trees, mitigation to trees. I would think that there would be some type of reevaluation of the environmental document or recertification to ensure that all the same impacts and mitigation are the same. And then I always kind of had this obscure question in my mind about if there's a new species listed, like the yellow-bellied tiger lizard, that happened to be populated in this area, and now it's endangered since 2016, would there have to be, that's just an example, a reabout of the environmental document?
Yeah, so with the, since we have an active building permit, so the staff planner who's working on that, they're using the original approved mitigation monitoring plan and corresponding with, for instance, the biological, the biologist who did the biological study, the arborist who did, you know, the oak tree evaluation, the traffic analysis, they're making sure that all of those mitigations have been dialed or addressed as part of the building permit process. So certainly, over the last, you know, several years and leading up, you know, as we've been reviewing the building permit, there has been correspondence from between the staff planner to ensure that, you know, what's in the existing MND, the existing MMRP, that those are being addressed. Now, at this point, you know, no new environmental analysis has been triggered, since the project's not changing. You know, is it possible that there's a new flower out there? Certainly, you know.
So I was thinking with a new app, there might be a need, or maybe it's a standard, to look at the environmental document again, make sure all the, and if the trees grow and they need more mitigation for the trees, because one of them's being cut down because of a bigger diameter, maybe there's more mitigation. Those are examples that I don't know if they apply, but the fact that it's a smaller footprint probably is less environmental impacts, maybe.
Yeah, there's a, you know, with these projects that kind of take a while to get going, there is a timeline where we could rely on environmental documents, because, you know, obviously, every few years, something could be changing. So if the Planning Commission's comfortable with the fact that the MND is, would that be eight years old? You know, you can basically still rely on it. You know, you can, you can basically still rely on it, but if you think that too much time has passed, you know, to, to, to rely on it, then Planning Commission can't, you know, that would require the project to re, you know, the applicant would need to go back and have new studies done, we'd have to do new environmental document, what, similar to what we would do, you know, with a brand new project.
Yeah, I'm not really suggesting, I was just wondering if there's some standard procedure that looks at the environmental document, does a reeval based on changes that may happen to the project, or changes that happen to the environment?
Yeah, we don't have a standard procedure with this reapproval process. This is actually pretty, you know, pretty brand new that, that we've had projects that have building permits in that are really close to being done, but that they ran out of time and that, that we're reapproving, so no, we don't have a standard. This is kind of the guinea pig.
Okay, great, thank you.
One thing, Commissioner Conley, we did, the city just completed with Caltrans an environmental analysis for the forty-six overcrossing interchange, which is basically the same site. So as of last year, we had current biological studies on this site, and no new species or issues were identified as part of that project. So I think, based on the amount of, we're doing a lot of work in this area, so we're not seeing any new significant issues showing up in this specific area. You know, had, had there been something significant on a neighboring property, then that might have changed our opinion.
Yeah, thank you. I didn't, I really didn't think there was a problem, I just wanted to raise the question as a matter of procedure, being a new application, do we now take a look at the environmental document again? Just to kinda make sure everything's intact still, yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you for that, that's a good question. So Darcy, just, I, I don't wanna labor on this, hypothetical, and I know, I think we're gonna hear from the representative, Mr. Miller here. If this were to be prolonged another four years, six years, would it, would it make sense that we would have to then go back and revisit? I mean, I know we don't have a set procedure, and maybe we haven't had to deal with this too often, but it just seems odd that we would, we would allow a document to stay in place and enforce ten years, as an example.
Yeah, it's not uncommon to rely on environmental documents for kind of a lengthy amount of time, especially with specific plans, you know, that can get vested with that first tract, and then the rest of development might have happened for twenty years, but they're relying on the original, you know, EIR that was done for a project. So it's not an uncommon practice to go long periods of time and still rely on the original environmental document. If, you know, they took longer than the Planning Commission was comfortable with, they would have to come back for another request for a time extension if they can't get it completed within the next two years. At that time, you can, you know, reevaluate, you would be given an opportunity to reevaluate this, this issue if, if you're quite uncomfortable, more uncomfortable with it at that point in time.
Which makes sense, so the question, I guess, would be just for the sake of just giving it thought, four years pass, if the Planning Commission decided, you know what, we need to revisit this, that in essence would bring a halt to everything, correct? From the builder's standpoint, would that stop the process?
So there's not gonna be an opportunity to revisit the CEQA question after it's reapproved, but it will come back every two years for time extensions. The commission has discretion whether or not to, you know, to grant those extensions. So every two years, it'll be a yes or no question before the commission. So if there's a concern that the setting, the environmental issues have changed, that would be basis, based to, you know, deny the time extension, which then would trigger basically a new application and new CEQA.
Got it, that makes sense, okay. Just wanna make sure we're clear on the expectation, especially for the applicant, going forward, that the longer this rolls out, I don't wanna say risk, but, you know, things could change. I think Mr. Miller is in the audience, would you, would you like to add some things, sir? Go ahead and formally introduce yourself.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Rob Miller with Wallace Group, we're the applicant civil engineer. So certainly detailed questions related to drainage and circulation, those types of things, I'll be able to handle readily, though I did also get involved with the last DRC hearing on this one a number of years ago. I'm also joined telephonically by Neil Patel, owner of Excel Hotel Group, who would be available by phone if needed, though. Neil and I have certainly communicated and we've worked together. Now, for, for quite a long time, I was involved in the original entitlements, so I've seen this progress, and I've seen the challenges that come along with a, certain brands trying to keep the cost down, going through multiple iterations of cost analysis, and trying to bring these projects to fruition. And I can say, since I'm working in the background with the team, that they are looking at reapplying to meet the city's plan check requests and get this thing off to a general contractor to start construction. The project they have in construction, the Residence Inn at Wilmar and, and Vine Streets is nearing that point in time where it's getting close to being done. So Excel would like to pivot and also get this one done, which was entitled after Residence Inn originally, and so this is something we'd like to, we'd like to move forward with. Just a couple of notes from the discussion, one is on the stormwater. We did work closely with staff, wanna thank staff for letting us have a look at these before we went to hearing, and have a little dialogue about it. The basin in the front will still be used for some of the public water for the, the public improvements that are being done. For our onsite water, because the footprint, as you see here, shrunk in the long dimension, we have a little room in the back that we're looking at for potential stormwater mitigation. Could always use chambers under parking if we have to, but we'll, we'll look at that back area first, but we don't see that as being a big issue, we feel comfortable with all of the conditions. And we also have looked very closely at the Union Road realignment as currently proposed in the various Caltrans approvals, and feel comfortable that we're, hey, well, there you go, up on the screen. I feel comfortable that the hotel layout is consistent both with what's happening behind the hotel, and also in the front, where there's multiple phases of Union Road. So we've looked at those overlays and feel comfortable that even though, yes, we're an island with improvements all around us, that we feel, feel good about the layout of the hotel. And be happy to answer any questions tonight. We certainly hope that this will be our last time before commission, and that the next time, you'll be driving by and see us breaking ground. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Miller? None? Mr. Miller, before you sit down, I do have one quick question for you, just out of curiosity, the delays that have occurred, I know this is a branded hotel, correct? How much, how much have they contributed, they being the franchise, to the delays at all, or has it all been on the front end?
Yeah, and I guess you'd say collaboration more than contribution, but there, there are, there's always changes in the brand layout. And the last time we were in front of development review, it was the exterior of the building, where they were looking to do slight modernizing, so that one event took an extra year or so to get that approved through the city process. Now we're looking at interiors, so, you know, you've gotta, you've gotta move these things forward as you're moving through plan check, because you can always be subject to some brand changes. But now that we have, I think, good progress on the other hotel, getting that over the finish line, this one's gonna be a primary focus, look forward to delivering it.
Okay, thank you for that, appreciate it. Okay?
Chair, I also showed Neil on the line.
Oh, okay. Would, would Neil like to make any comments, or add, add anything?
Good evening, everyone. Can, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great. I just wanted to echo what Rob Miller just mentioned, and we appreciate all of the help that the staff has provided us over these several years, and your consideration on this refile that we're doing. It's our intent and we're committed to moving this project forward and being a good partner with the city, a long-term partner with the city, so your consideration in this request will be deeply appreciated by us.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it. Okay, if there are no other Commissioner questions or comments, we'll open it up to general public. I'm not seeing any general public comments in the room. Marcy, any callers?
No, no callers.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close general public, bring it back to the commission for any further questions, comments, or motion.
Chair, I, I move that we approve the refile for the draft resolution, PC twenty-five dash X X X.
I'll second that. We've got it first by Commissioner Christiansen, a second by Commissioner Kogler, roll call, please.
Commissioner Christiansen?
Aye.
Commissioner Kogler?
Aye.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Chairperson Kovarubius?
Aye.
So the motion passes four zero with Commissioner Neil having a conflict and having left the room.
All right, thank you, Mr. Miller. All right, I guess we can let Commissioner Neil back into the room. Hope he can hear us. Look at that.
His ears were burning.
All right, we'll go on.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. We'll go on now to discussion items. First thing on the agenda there is the consent calendar. Any questions or comments about the consent? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Got it first by Commissioner.
I'll second that.
And we've got it second by Commissioner Christiansen. Roll call, please.
Who is the first and second again?
We've got the first by Commissioner Conley, and the second by Commissioner Kovarub, I'm sorry, Christiansen. I seconded it myself.
Commissioner Conley?
Aye.
Commissioner Christiansen?
Aye.
Commissioner Neil?
Aye.
Commissioner Kogler?
Aye.
Chairperson Kovarubius?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, let's move on to other reports, past Robles Streetscape and Ad hoc Committee?
No report tonight.
No report? Housing Constraints and Opportunities?
So the Housing Constraints Committee, it was a committee that was formed almost ten years ago by the city council, was kind of a special committee. We're in the process now of formalizing the committee, so we'll be adopting bylaws for that committee, that'll set terms and requirements for committee members. We expect that to go to city council probably in the next month or so, and then we'll probably be convening the next Housing Constraints meeting after that. And then in terms of zoning code updates, uh, let's see, next meeting, we will be having a workshop to talk about home occupations. So the home occupations were not approved by the council, the commission's recommendation on that. There was a lot of public comments and concerns about some of those restrictions and requirements on home occupations. So our next step is to bring that to the Planning Commission, invite the public to come in and express their concerns, and then we'll see if the commission's in a position to make a new recommendation to city council on that item.
Thank you for that, Warren. Are there any questions, changes for the DRC committee rotation schedule? Yes, sir, Commissioner Kogler?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of conflicts in April, which could be resolved either by somebody covering for me, or if somebody wanted to do a wholesale month change. We don't have to resolve that tonight, but I have a conflict on the seventh and the fourteenth, and if anybody in October, November, January, February would ever like to switch months, I could do that, too. So, I know some of the commissioners aren't here tonight, which may impact that, so this could ride till next time around unless somebody wants to jump on the bad wagon, switch. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have an opportunity to fill any of those now? If not, we can bring it back next, next meeting when we're a little closer and have more commissioners here. I might be able to do the seventh, I just have to double check, but I'll have an answer for sure by the next time. Okay, uh, let's go on to then. Final Planning Commissioner comments, any closing comments to my right? No, any to my left? Seeing none, I'll make one comment, I wanna thank everybody for their patience today, we're moving right along. I gotta be careful I don't move too fast, but I promise I'll get a good flow going here in, in, in short time, so appreciate everybody's patience with my first official meeting. Staff comments?
I think we were gonna get a report from Commissioner Christiansen on his little trip to the Planning Commission Academy.
Got it.
Thank you, Warren, I, I was waiting for it to pop up on the screen, so it's a little more official. And, and Warren can share this, it's just a, a brief synopsis of what took place. It was very informative, Commissioner Roden and I attended the academy, and you can see the breakdown of some of the sessions and the ideas and the concepts that we discussed and worked on. I would have to say that probably one of the most, probably the most attended seminar class was the land use and zoning, that was probably the most, the most discussion we had, other than the CEQA advanced class that, that, that was there. And basically, a lot of the topic dealt with some of the ministerial projects and builder remedies that, that some of the cities have been seeing recently, which was concerning to hear about, but it made me feel really good about our staff and our city, the way we've been handling a lot of this, and with the new zoning code updates. Just can tell you right now that we're in a really good position because of all that. Objective standards was another topic that was a hot topic, so to speak, and a lot of cities are going through some of their new general plans now, or general plan amendments right now, and so objective standards, I think, are gonna become a very important and integral part of their, of those cities' general plans, which ours, I spoke and met with a lot of commissioners and, and, you know, we got into discussion, I met a new commissioner from Aurora Grande, for example, they're doing a new general plan amendment, and, and suggested maybe he'd take a look at some of our new zoning, objective standards that we completed. So affordable housing was also an issue, talked about some of the new laws that, that, that may be coming down the pike, some stuff that kind of, I should say emphasizes some of the changes that were made with like, say SB thirty-five and others. If you wanna jump down there a little bit, like I said, Warren can share this with you guys, and then if you have further questions, I'm happy to follow up, or I'm sure Commissioner Roden would follow up. I think some of the topics like small town growth, even for some of the large cities like Fountain View, who's in the middle of, of a bunch of other large metropolitan areas, and they have the struggle of meeting some of their RENA requirements and have had that struggle. And then on the opposite side of that, San Jose has seen such a massive sprawl, and they're trying to scale that back in, and have, you know, some of that offset to some of the smaller areas, was a, was a long discussion. Go ahead and scroll down. Yeah, we, there was some discussion of the cost-effective solutions for small cities like us. I think the discussion that came up is infrastructure was a major issue, obviously. How are we gonna handle our, our infrastructure growth with all the demand that's being put on cities like ours? And that was a, a discussion that not only was in some of the seminar discussions, but actually outside, when you were talking to other commissioners or, or city staff members from other cities, that, that was something that they were also battling and, and dealing with on that. So anyway, it was very insightful, I really appreciated going again, because every time I go, I feel like I retain twenty percent of one thing and maybe twenty percent of another, and then you go back and you hopefully you can retain forty percent of something else and another twenty percent. So it's, it's constant, and it's a constant educational process, but I really appreciated, and it gave me a lot of good insights. I think Commissioner Roden really appreciated it, and I'll let her speak to that, but I, I think that it was very educational, and I, again, I appreciated all that they provided, so hope that helps.
Thank you for the update.
Any other staff comments?
Just a couple of quick ones here. Let's see, Ribbon Cutting, Sunrise Villas, that's the affordable project, Olson South Chandler, that is next Tuesday, March eighteenth, four P M. So we hope to have all of the commission out there, if you're available, the council will be out there, the housing authority will be out there, the master developer will be out there, I think we'll have some dignitaries there as well, it's, it's a great project, almost seventy very low-income housing units for families, it's fully leased up. If you haven't been out there, it's, it's a beautiful little project, really the first thing, you know, to be completed there at Olson, and then when you're out there, you can see the rest of the project really coming along, the backbone roads are, you know, pretty much done at this point, they're getting them landscaped, the farm stands in, the pool house is in, the pickleball courts are in, it's, it's really turning into a real nice project out there. So hopefully we can see everybody out there for that. And then, as I mentioned, our next meeting's gonna be the main item. item will be the public workshop, just to take public comments on home occupations. Probably April, looks like we probably have a townhouse project at Olson South Chandler, which is the, the Area Two, which is right next to the apartment project we're going to be seeing. And that's coming back for re, reapproval, update to the master development plan there. And then I think the boys' school, we've got the EIR out, it's for public review. Hopefully you guys are having some time just to start working your way through that. Probably, you know, late summer's the earliest it would hit a Planning Commission agenda optimistically at this point. So that'll conclude staff's report.
Awesome. Remind me again, Warren, the ribbon cutting starts at what time?
Four PM on Tuesday, March eighteenth. So that's next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, if there are no other comments, I'll ask for an adjournment. So move, all in favor, second?
Aye.
We are adjourned.